Good evening, everybody. We're here for the January 28th School Committee meeting. Thank you for coming a little early. We're going to get to some other meetings. We're going to start with a lot of minutes to approve. So our first set of minutes is from the regular session of January 8th, 2013.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the regular session, January 8th, 2013.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes from the budget hearing of January 10th, 2013.
I'll move that we approve the budget hearing minutes from January 25th, January 10th, 2013.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Regular session minutes from January 14th, 2013.
I'll make a motion that we approve the regular session minutes of the School Committee from January 14th, 2013.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Budget hearing minutes from January 17th, 2013.
I'll move that we approve the budget hearing minutes, School Committee for January 17th, 2013.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
If I could just say I recognize that it was a terrific job on all of these minutes.
Thank you, Ray.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's a lot of minutes.
A lot of minutes.
That's great. We're on to item three, questions and comments. Any questions and comments?
No.
In the audience? Nope? Okay, great. Communications. Have you received any communications?
No.
Okay. Student communications, Stephen. How are you?
Good.
How are you? Good, thank you.
All right. So first we start off with the boys track team. Boys, four by eight hundred meter rally, DDA, broke school record by eight seconds at eight oh nine point two. Nick Nielsen is running well in the mile. Duncan Berlay is one thousand meter, also broke the school record. Brian Bowles is running well the two hundred meter and the long jump. Jay Curdle is doing well at shot put and number one in the division that the school is in. Also, the boys and girls won Division III State Relay, which was a few weeks back. And Chris McDowell is still doing well at the high jump. The debate team has a meet this Wednesday, I think in high school, where they'll face up a various number of teams from all over the southeast and open, South Shore and western parts of Massachusetts. Girls track, they, Julie McCombeville's running well in the mile and two mile. I always see her running back and forth, back all the time.
I saw her at Co-Hasset this weekend.
She's crazy how far she runs. Funny, you see her all the time running around. Also, the, Gabriella's, Candelaria is doing well. Also, Annalise Carroll while sprinting and, Annalise Carroll and Carly Baggett is doing well sprinting and throwing teams. Coach Job was named a boy coach of the Northeast for all, towards a ball team, which is pretty awesome for him. And also the, Hingham High School also recently participated in the code drive to get the senior of the A-team. I moved, who was it? Ed Sheeran. Ed Sheeran. I always know the song, I know the artist, Ed Sheeran, to come to the school. We narrowly lost NDA, we had seventy-plus coats, baggies of coats, which is quite impressive for our school population, because it was such a large amount of baggage to bag. So.
That's great. That was quick.
Yeah.
You got someplace to go tonight?
Oh, I just, I'm busy, I've applied to seven more schools tonight.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Good luck.
Thank you. And my kid's unfortunately sick tonight, so that's that.
Okay.
I hope to see you soon. I'll have more next week.
All right. Thank you, Stephen. Thank you. Okay. So that brings us right to six point one, which is to receive the proposed program of studies for the 2013-2014 school year.
There's a copy of the two-sided summary up there. If any of you didn't get it. Okay. As usual during this meeting in January, we review high school and middle school work on revising the program of studies and we review it after the school committee meeting against questions. This is the first of a four-part process at the secondary level. The first part is obviously putting together the program of studies, new courses, delete courses, update and that kind of thing. The second part is the student, having the parent meetings and then the students sign up for various courses. The third part is when the budget is finalized, we can then make staffing decisions in terms of which courses will be able to run or not run, how many sections. And then lastly, Dr. Gerard McCann and Mr. Bowdy get to work on the schedule and final of the summer. So one of the things I do want to call your attention to is on the first page, and actually I think it was the suggestion, suggestion of one of the school committees, I forget. Particularly when we're going through budget, you know, issues, there's a statement that I think is important for everyone to be aware of. And obviously, we try to offer as many of the courses as we can, but once we get into budgeting, inclusion and staffing, all of the courses are not run. So in particular, like an example would be, I think in the English elective, there's five or six different offerings, but only one is currently running during this school year. And the other issue is, in addition to the budget and the staffing, is we have to have sufficient enrollment to run sections. So if students sign up for a course and there's not sufficient enrollment to run a section of the course, then those students would be informed and they would make other choices. So just go through the summary very quickly. At the middle school level, grade six students will have three choices, the band course and orchestra, and this is similar, so the structure we currently have at the fifth grade. In business, one of the new courses we have is the Hingham Tech Squad, which was Dr. Gerard McCann's latest version. It was a lot peppier titled than the first one we started out with. And the idea of this is very, actually pretty common in high schools. In particular Burlington High School is known for this, when they went to their iPad initiative, is to have the students work with teachers in terms of technology integration and support. And so I know that Paula is excited about the opportunity to have our kids do this. The other aspect of it is it provides authentic 21st century learning opportunity for the kids that's very close to what they might do in a real job application. In English, we have a new course, Advanced Placement, English Language and Composition, Level One. This is related to several reasons, one of which, as you know, we've been working on aligning our ELA, our English Language Arts Curriculum and Literacy to the Common Core. You know that we already have an AP Advanced Placement Literature course. The focus of this is on language and composition. And while the students in this class will read some of the selections of the American literature that are covered in the American Studies classes at Level Two and Three, the focus is on nonfiction, or what's now called explanatory writing is the term that is used, or informational writing. And the focus is on kids really learning how to analyze and dissect complex reading. In addition, the focus again with the Common Core is a real emphasis on persuasive and argumentative writing. So that will be a new opportunity for our students. And the New Orleans, through its literature, hasn't run recently, and so that has been deleted. And the Family and Consumer Science is just a matter of separating out, the kids could always take passion clear, too, it just was within the one description, and so now it's separated out with two different course numbers. And Human Development and Family Life also deleted because that hasn't run. AP Spanish Literature was updated, Technology Education updated as well. And you know, our very popular graphic courses, we changed the title of it to reflect the actual curriculum. So what used to be called Graphic Design One is now Graphic Design and Photography One. Then the second level, there's a separate Photography course and a separate Graphics course. And then if students go to the third level, that will now be entitled Graphic Design and Photography Three, since it also does include the photography. The Library and Media, again, a new course, that semester course that we hope to offer. And this is, part of it is an outgrowth of, if you recall, we had been in a grant for Technology Integration Training through the North River Collaborative. And so we sent a team of five or six teachers with a leader from the middle school and the high school, and this is one of the outgrowths of that training in terms of providing, training in Web 2.0, using Google tools and multimedia and webisodes would be part of what the kids would be learning.
That's really neat.
Yep. And you know that for the past two or three years, we've been working on revising and updating our middle school and our high school math courses. And so actually, I think this is the last part of it, isn't it, Doc? Pretty much, close?
The last title change.
The last title. And as you know, the expectations and the content for the math courses, both at the middle and the high school, have been increased, and so Doc and his math departments have been working on that for the last two or three years. They started with the Level Two. Also, at the elementary level, the math specialists have been working with their elementary teachers on it. And this year, we, he has revised the Level Three classes. And so if you recall, the initiative that Doc had mentioned in terms of having twenty after-school sessions, part of that is connected to this, so that what was Algebra II and Conics is replaced with Algebra II with Trigonometry. But the students who'd be taking that didn't get some of the content that was in Algebra Quadratic emphasis. And so this is an opportunity, it'll be before and after school, like two days a week, for the students to come and catch up on some of that content so that they can do better in the course. The course Evolution of Rock replaces Art of Listening, which hasn't run. Physical Education, you know that our juniors and our seniors have a physical education requirement, there are a variety of ways that they can carry that out. In the past, we've offered two sections of grade eleven, twelve, physical education, and they've been two sections of pretty much the same course. And so what the phys ed department has recommended is now there'll be two courses, one section of each, physical education, team sports and lifetime games. And then the other choice would be physical education, wellness and personal fitness, which I think is a great idea, particularly we want to encourage our girls, you know, to take the phys ed offerings that are available at the junior and senior level. The, another new course, Introduction to Criminal Justice, was added, and our school resources officer will be teaching that. And in reading, pretty much just an updating of the titles to be in line with the literacy approach that we're using. And in science, just a separation out of the course description of Level One, Electrives One, Level Two and Level Three and Four. And you can see on the memo in the box at the end, the various parent information links. So the first one, so I see that in my glasses, February 26th would be the parents entering the high school at seven. February 28th, parents and students entering grade seven and eight at the middle school at seven. And April 25th, parents and students entering grade six also at seven. So if you have any questions, I can answer them. Roger, Paula, Greg, and Helen, and Doc as well.
Okay. Great.
Just a couple things. One, and maybe Paula, you're the best one, for the February 26th night, perhaps you should consider staggering the times in grades under the circumstances for the parking.
Well, it's one presentation. It's not individual things. I do a presentation in the auditorium to everybody, and then people then have an opportunity to speak to the different directors.
It's not really subscribed, I would say.
No, that's not it. I wish, I wish that were a program.
I know. It should be.
I'm just trying to be sensitive to the parking we've been addressing recently.
Yeah, we haven't had any usual booking nights.
Okay. Two other things. One, and maybe Roger can answer this, in the sixth grade, I realize sixth grade not quite like seventh and eighth where you have a choice for elective, so sixth grade there is no elective choice, is that correct?
Well, it's more of an exploratory type of program. The only thing a sixth grader will choose is which language they'd like to speak, French, Spanish, or band forceless strings. Everything else is the same for all sixth graders.
Okay. Just with respect to the music, there's no other, there's no additional period that would be available for anything else. So for instance, a child wanted to take both chorus and a string instrument, they couldn't do that?
They could not get that.
Okay. It might be a good idea if we talked to our instructors who are instructing at the elementary level, because some of them are encouraging kids to go into one area or another, saying that the other thing will be available to them in middle school, when it's not really the case until seventh grade, I guess. Is that right?
Their choice would be seventh grade. Well, I mean, in the music program, sixth, seventh or eighth, they still have, they all have the same opportunity, except that the sixth graders don't have it at the same frequency that the seventh and eighth graders will have.
So in seventh and eighth, there's an extra period where you could choose to take a second music class?
They could just, they could take more than one elective at that point, and then they could choose more than one music. It's rip.
Okay.
But I mean, you could be, as an example, great, great in the band, and you also like to sing. So there would be the option, the ability for somebody in seventh and eighth grade to take your music at that time.
And then just my last one. Ellen, the, I went to September meeting to pull out the curriculum for sixth grade.
Yeah.
Since that's part of the secondary, is there a way to incorporate this into this going forward?
What we do is the middle school session that's in the program of studies, because it is grade six or twelve, has the basics. And when we do the curriculum summaries for the elementary level, we do them in the summer because they're used in open houses, usually because they're not used until our April meeting, I think. Roger?
Yep.
April meeting is that it's revised later, but certainly can be revised earlier in the year.
I mean, but shouldn't this begin with the seventh and eighth, since it's middle school? I'm asking, because this is...
Well, there's a summary of that information within the program of studies. That grade six just goes into it a little bit more in detail, and part of that is because there's a requirement for us to review with the school committee the elementary curriculum. And elementary can be considered to be K five or K six, and so that's the reasoning behind that.
But that does go to the parents for the April 25th meeting. So you do get it.
So you just want to send a small thing out to the parents, or do you send the whole thing out?
As far as, we guess...
We have a special, extra special meeting for incoming parents of sixth graders. We go over all of the course offerings, we go through the process that they have to go through for selecting. They don't have a lot of choices in grade six, as I said before, foreign language and music. And we go through that whole process, we tell them what libraries they like at the middle school, and what the team is all about, and we do send many of the teachers on that night. We're more concerned about the parents than I am the students.
Right, exactly.
Which we do our best to relieve the anxieties of the unknown.
Right. Having gone through it three times myself, I know.
It's just that's the way it's been done in the past.
Right, I just, I mean, other than the, other than the one paragraph on page two that references sixth grade, I didn't find anything else in here that...
It's very general.
I mean...
But that thing is in preparation for the very detailed meeting. This really is in preparation for the meetings that are coming up in February.
Which are not the sixth graders.
Which doesn't include sixth grade.
Which doesn't include sixth grade.
And sixth grade has very few choices.
Right.
No, I understand. I just, I get the timing of it now, whereas I just think if we're categorizing as a middle school, it has 990 hours versus 900 hours, it probably should go into the secondary one, but that's just...
Page.
Okay. That's all.
Carol?
Love the new Hingham Tech Squad offering, and I think we'll probably be using them, so that's a good thing. And also the Life on the Web, I think that's, those are great, kind of very contemporary classes that the kids will gravitate towards. Question for Lani, what's, have other schools already offered this new AP English, and what's their experience with kids signing up for?
Actually, it's not new.
Okay. New to us? Right.
Lani?
We're probably one of the only...
Oh, Lani, you should, I'm sorry, you should come up. Check Ellen out. There you go. State your name and address, I'm just kidding.
It's not, it's not a new course per se, it's new to the team. We really just didn't have the opportunity before, and as Ellen mentioned, because of the new framework.
Right.
And a couple of other situations where they began to offer AP American History in the junior year, I thought this was a nice balance to that.
So in the other communities that are offering it, do they, is it very well subscribed?
Actually, it, yes, it is very well subscribed, and it's becoming more popular, probably even more so, more subscribed than the AP Lit.
Really?
Most other towns in the South Shore area will end up with the directors, or is in touch with the directors, they offer the AP Language and Composition.
Okay.
And what we are planning to do is kind of create a bit of a hybrid course, so that the students still are getting what we consider a very important background in some of the American Lit selections that we've done, the culture and confidence and...
Okay. So this would be focused mainly to eleventh graders?
Yes, mostly.
And you would try to incorporate some of the American sides?
Right. We, I've been in touch with a couple of other towns that are doing just that, and we're going to be visiting them, and they've already sent me their curriculum that we're doing.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ed?
Ellen?
Yes?
On the Family and Consumer Science section, what was the reason for the deletion of the Human Development and Family Life course?
Despite including it in the program of studies, I think two or, two years maybe, we've never, it's never had enough enrollment to run it. So that's the reason.
How many kids do you need to have the course be viable?
It depends on the subject, so science would be different, and music and so on. So what would you use?
Semester, if it's a semester length, you'd like to see at least one or two kids on the course. And we never got, we never got the kids.
Really? When I read the synopsis, it struck me as a very valuable course.
That's what we thought.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, but just a minute. So when we talk about adding new courses, in essence, what we're saying is adding new potential courses, right?
Right.
So it's not, it's not net additions.
Exactly.
We're not talking about adding additional staff and those kinds of things.
Right. So the offerings, the course offerings are put out there, all the potential courses. And then, like I said, students sign up, you take a look at the enrollment, you know, for instance, the course we just talked about didn't have enough. When the budget is finalized, Dot and I meet with all of the principals and the directors and go over in minute detail the recommendations that they have for staffing, both at the middle school and the high school. And then that pretty much is the tentative schedule for the year, and then you have to basically make it work when you do the scheduling during the middle and high school. The problem with scheduling is when you have singletons, singletons meaning one section of a course, it's more difficult for you to do the schedule because of constraints, where if you have multiple sections of a course, it's easier to fit it into students' schedules. So essentially, what happens is with these new courses, if there's enrollment enough sufficient and staffing sufficient to offer them, then it may be in the place of another section of another course. So for instance, Life on the Web, if that gets quite a bit of enrollment, perhaps there might be one less section of TV production.
The only other thing I would echo Ray's suggestion, that if we're going to have a program of studies at Hingham Secondary Schools, and we consider sixth grade part of the middle school, it seemed to me that it really should be included in here, how you do it, you know, how you do it in terms of the spring and the fall, and when it's reviewed or whatever, I certainly would leave up to you guys, but it would seem to make sense to classify it that way.
Okay. Any other comments? I don't know if Paula can unmute.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. That's great. Six point two is to determine the next steps in value engineering. So I had sent out an email last week asking people for additional comments. I was going to put those all together and submit them to Gail. I received no comments or questions from any of you, so I'm assuming you all understand exactly what we were looking at, and we feel educated enough to go ahead and continue our value engineering. Is that correct?
Correct.
I think there are a couple of things on the table, because we need more information from somebody else, a third party, whether it was Gail or maybe Margaret or...
There was some confusion about fencing.
Right, right.
But when I sent out the email, nobody got back to me. So that's why if there was confusion or...
Well, I just figured that was a pending, you know, right, it wasn't, it was anything new. It wasn't anything beyond what we'd already discussed.
Yeah, I thought, that was my understanding, because we had talked about a couple things, I think that was one of them that we tabled pending further information, so I thought if there was anything in addition to...
So we want, we want clarification on fencing.
We also were going to consult with Roger on a number of things, and I'm not sure that that has happened on all the items that we listed.
No, we heard back, we heard back from Roger.
We did, yeah.
Yeah, we did. So...
I don't think all, do we know what those answers are on what the items were, I can't...
Yeah, we do. I mean, I guess I could get them back out to you guys, but I think John reported back from Roger. And Ray, correct me if I, you talked with Peter Bradley also, and he didn't really have...
Oh, on certain specific costs, yes, absolutely. But I thought there were specific questions we did have for Roger on some items, not just...
Yeah, they were the ones, if you remember the grid, they were suggestions where Gail said town could, town could install granite curving, town could...
Yeah, I think John's feedback was from Roger that really when push comes to shove, it really wouldn't save us much money. Yeah, Roger and Paul Field, right.
So that was...
Okay.
All right. So I will ask Gail to come to our next school committee meeting to clarify the fencing. Is there anything else, or if you would like to send me an email? Because I'd like to get everything to them ahead of time so it can be a productive discussion.
The only thing I had, Carol, is, you know, as I was looking through the list, one of the things there's been a lot of discussion about is the number of seats in the bleachers. And the thing I hadn't heard previously was about the bleachers facing toward the track. I think it was 387 seats, so I had emailed Margaret, and she got back to me, and she said that because of the track meets and the number of students on the teams, and the parents, it was like 200, between the two teams, there might be 200 students participating and parents coming, that she thought 387 was really a minimal number. So my initial reaction was, oh, for a track meet, we're really going to 400 people in the stands, but because it's used by the participants, so in case for all the people out in TV land or others that didn't want to think we had ignored that, it comes up in the future, that at least it has been thought through, and that was where that number came from.
Right, right. Ed?
Another point about that is the fact that we are taking down, at the conclusion of the project, the current bleachers on the current field, and they will be replaced by new bleachers on the new field. But we also are losing what were the temporary bleachers because of the encroachment of the new structure. And so there would literally be no bleachers, not only for track, but for any other game, it could be a freshman game or any other game. So it's a replacement for seats that are there now that will not be there, and in particular, the need for track. And you're right, for the students as well as any spectators they might have. And we have tried to clarify that, I think, even in terms of the warrant article that we'll talk about in a few minutes, we've really tried to clarify that those bleachers would never be used simultaneously with the bleachers that are facing the new field. with the bleachers that are facing the new field.
Right. Right. No, I think, I think our bleacher size is appropriate based upon the number of participants and the sports and... So good point, Dennis. All right. Our next item is to confirm the edits to the proposed warrant articles. Ray, do you want to?
Sure. So you recall last week before the deadline for submission of the articles to the selectmen, I contacted you individually with respect to a couple of suggestions that Carol and I had talked about, got your individual feedback, and as a result, distributed revised warrant articles that were then submitted to Betty Foley on the 22nd. So what you have in front of you that Dot handed out is the clean version of the three warrant articles that were submitted on the 22nd. And attached to that is the final markup that shows the changes, the final changes from what had been...
Bless you.
Doesn't show a cumulative markup, but it shows the most recent markup. And I think there were many markups, so I think we've all seen them. So, and essentially, the main change was obviously going from three articles to four, from four articles to three, rather. And a clarification on the bleacher seating. Dennis, you pointed out something important, and, and I think it's important to note, and there was some more clarity needed in the language of the bleachers because, as it turns out, the bleacher seating we're adding in the proposed project for the multipurpose field is a net decrease. That's a decrease from what we currently have at Michelson Field. The total number of bleacher seating available in the whole project will increase, but only because we're adding some more seats on the track side. So again, the, the bleacher seating available for the multipurpose field is a net decrease from what we currently have. And we felt that there was some, some clarification was necessary because a lot of questions had arisen with respect to that issue. So we thought if it went in for the warrant article, that would be helpful. Andy also, also provided some, some nice suggestions for language changes, and so that's what we had. So I just wanted you to have the final clean version that was submitted.
Great. Okay, good.
Do you want to have a ratification of this?
Do you want, do you...
I will make a motion that we confirm and ratify the three warrant articles in front of you that were submitted to the Board of Selectmen on January 22nd.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great job on that, Ray, that was a lot of work.
It was a lot of work.
Thank you.
Thank you, it absolutely was. Absolutely was.
Okay. Six point four is to determine oversight responsibility for the concession design project. Fortunately, John just left us. We would have liked him here for this discussion. But as you know, there was a subcommittee of Ray, Andy, Ed, and John who reviewed and rated the RFPs that we had put out for the design of the concession building. And on the 17th, we voted to allow John to move forward and negotiate with, with a provider, and that provider was Gail, that has, where the design has been rewarded, awarded. So now we have to create a group to continue to work with Gail on the design. I don't know if we want to keep it the same, same group of people, or if John wants to have these meetings take place mostly during the day and therefore like people who are local. Any thoughts on that?
I think he was happy with the idea that the group might continue.
Okay. So that would be Ray, Andy, and Ed? Are you guys okay with that? And Andy's not here, but...
Who's Andy?
We, we lost him a while ago.
Oh.
I absolutely am.
You're, you're interested and willing?
I'm in.
Okay. Okay.
And I think in terms of the group, it may be John that carries the information back and forth. It may be that John is available on a day-to-day basis, but then when issues or concerns come up, then he would want to be able to consult with the other members.
Okay. All right, that's great.
So just, so presumably the negotiation has successfully concluded, so the pricing is within the, below the cap that we talked about?
Yes. I believe that's correct.
Yep. Okay. Six point five is to receive the notification of the resignation of Charlotte Allen. We wish her good luck and a happy retirement. And then six point six, six point seven, is that it? Six, eight, and nine are appointments. So we welcome those people to the Hingham School system. And then six point 10 is to receive notifications of advancement on the salary schedule. Dot, do you want to make any comments?
Well, just that by their contract, teachers can change lanes or columns or degree status twice during the year by submitting all the data by September 1 or by February 1. So these are folks that have moved to a new lane in salary column between September and now. And therefore, and they've submitted their information and they'll be moving with their salary changing as of February 1.
Okay, that's great.
We budget for that, actually. There's a, in the 2,300 section of the budget, there is a salary change column, so we budget for it in one year. And then you see a blank in the successive year because those salaries then get incorporated into the line above it, which includes the new salary.
Any comments or questions? Okay. Six point 11 and 12 are field trips, which look fantastic.
Six point 11, we have periodic trips where students go to, go to Spain. So this is not a terribly new notion. This particular one is time of April vacation. I think students lose two days in April on this one. And the other one is a trip that's been occurring every couple of years. It takes actually a two-year period to prepare both during, in terms of fundraising and, and the development of the project that they will do and so on. So in the past, students, part of this World Challenge trip thing have been to India, they've been to Vietnam, anywhere else. Those are the only two that Ellen and I could remember, India and Vietnam and...
Yeah, Bosnia and...
Oh, yes. Right. And so this one now is a, a trip to South Africa.
That's wonderful.
It's a project component, it's a lengthy trip. These obviously are costly, and we, we are fortunate, and, and kids in Hingham are fortunate that parents are able to provide some of these experiences, but they are, they are costly endeavors, but for the students who are able to go, well worth the, the money, I'm sure.
Right. There's 26 children going to Africa. I mean, that's wonderful. Okay, that's great. Seven is other items we might not reasonably be aware of. I think we're good?
No, I included information just a statement that the audit has been completed. We're in good shape with respect to that. Received a letter today, actually, that we are being invited back to meet with the plumbing board to see whether or not we can...
So who's going to go with you on that?
Well, John and I and whoever else would like to come. I, I think we need to check on whether or not we want someone from the architect to come. Last time it was Lindsay Barbie went with John.
Yeah. Okay.
So I think we could invite anyone, or anyone could choose to go, but...
And that's back in that office in Boston again, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
What's the, do you have the date again? Did I...
It's next, it's the 6th.
6th, 6th.
Okay, so we can let Gail know. All right, that's wonderful. Building committee report, Ray?
I have nothing new, although I have gotten a number of people come up to me recently who saw the spread in the paper last week. Thank you, Hingham Journal, for posting that. And also who have just gone by the school and noticed the construction and, wow, I didn't realize all this was going on. Look what they've done. You know, it's pretty, pretty tremendous, so nothing new to report.
So, did you have the topping off ceremony yet?
No, it's going to be probably mid-February. We're still trying to schedule that. It'll be the, the final beam be delivered, if it hasn't been delivered already, maybe it was supposed to be this week or next week.
Okay, next week, they re-mobilize the...
Steel. Right. So there's some steel to be finished, they'll deliver the final beam, there'll be an opportunity for folks to come by and sign it, and then there'll be a ceremony. I think the MSBA wants to participate, so we got to coordinate that with them, but probably sometime in mid to late February.
Well, a 50-degree day like Wednesday's would be great.
That would be nice.
Be perfect.
Okay. Any other subcommittee reports?
I tried to put into the calendar where I think all of the meetings are over the next month, there are a few uncertainties about time, so as soon as we can clarify those, I will make another color-coded calendar to try to keep us all in the right place at the right time.
I appreciate the color-coded, color-coded calendar.
Even though we had to change it many times.
Do we have a time for Thursday night? Is it 7:30?
I, I don't know the time. Did, Mary, do you know the time on Thursday?
I think it's posted on the website for 7 o'clock.
7 o'clock, okay. And Mary, do you know the other meetings, the 19th, for example, of the Ed Subcommittee?
The Ed Subcommittee is meeting on the 19th, I believe, at 7:30, and that will be a posted meeting.
Thank you. And then the 26th and the 28th?
The 26th will be the school...
Presentation.
...advisory hearing for the entire advisory committee. That will be a televised meeting, and that will be when the Subcommittee prepares its recommendation. The 28th is when the...
And that's what time?
That is, that will begin at 7:30.
Okay.
The 28th is scheduled to begin at 7:30, and that is the date that all budgets and the capital budget will be voted.
Thank you.
Okay.
Dot, are you going, were you going to notice for us for the 31st, for this Thursday?
Well, yes, I was going to have Nancy put something out. I don't know that it's required that... We're, we're doing a presentation, but we're going to, we're going to post it just in case.
Okay.
I don't know who's posted it, but...
Okay. So another busy month ahead. Superintendent's report?
Nothing really, other than what you received tonight.
We have no need for executive session, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Hi, Neil. Good, how are you?